I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yes, we have two changes. So, item 5A, recognition of West Mesa Little League All-Stars Fast Pitch Softball Team to be deferred to September 14th meeting. And then the second one is item 12A, under Behavioral Health. So, the fourth quarter update to be deferred, and we'll start with the first quarter update in September. And a vote is required for the changes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda changes?
I move to approve them.
I have a motion by Commissioner O'Malley. And a second, right? That's the second? Or I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Pascoti. All in favor of the changes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam County Manager, can we have a roll call vote, please? I mean, Madam County Clerk. I didn't mean County.
I moved you up quick, didn't it?
There you are.
Mr. Barbosa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pascoti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation this evening. Very, very serious to all of us. It's Suicide Prevention Month. Madam Commissioner, Chair Pascoti to present.
Thank you. This is a proclamation of the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners. Whereas suicide and suicide attempts have a serious public health impact and can have lasting harmful effects on the health and well-being of individuals, family, friends, coworkers in the community. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 through 34, it is the 10th leading cause of death overall in the United States. And in 2019, suicide was responsible for more than 47,500 US deaths, resulting in approximately one death every 11 minutes. And whereas the overall suicide rate in the US has increased by 35% since 1999. Over the last 10 years, New Mexico's suicide rate has consistently been 50% higher than the national average. And whereas the National Alliance on Mental Health, NAMI, has designated September as National Suicide Prevention Month in an effort to raise awareness and destigmatize this growing public health concern. They have also been spreading hope and vital information to people affected by suicide to ensure friends and families have access to needed resources to discuss suicide prevention and to seek help. And whereas local advocates, leaders, and organizations are actively striving to make every effort to reduce factors that contribute to suicide, to increase awareness and education efforts, and to improve access to treatment to ensure appropriate resources are in place to support our community and build individual and family resilience. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month and invites all community members, public and private organizations, businesses, and institutions to participate by advocating for and increasing suicide prevention efforts. Recognizing that suicide is preventable and everyone can have a role in saving lives and creating healthy and strong individuals, families, and communities. Done this 31st day of August 2021 in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico, and signed by all the Commissioners. And I believe we have some guests today to speak on this.
So yes, I have Juliette, Stacy, and Helen that were going to speak on this. I don't know if they're going to speak individually.
Hi, thank you so much for inviting us and having us. I'll give a quick blurb. And if Stacy or Helen want to add, that would be wonderful. Thank you again for inviting us and having us. I am Juliette Beck, and I'm with Albuquerque Public Schools Office of School Climate. We have a generous grant from Bernalillo County for suicide prevention, which funds peer helper programs at 21 APS middle and high schools. Our peer helpers are trained in youth development, suicide prevention, and helping skills. And our peer helpers are the link between our students and critical services that can help prevent suicide. Thank you again for having us. And Stacy or Helen, please feel free to add. Both Stacy and Helen are peer helper sponsors at two of our APS schools. Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
I can jump in first. So I'm Stacy Kwakawski. I'm a Taylor Middle School School Counselor. And I've been part of the Peer Sponsor Program or Peer Helper Program for the last two years. We have kids 6th, 7th, and 8th grade in the program. And their goal is to help others in our school setting and help them get into the services that they need. Reach out to somebody who might be struggling and help connect them to the appropriate resources. I've already just started going through my regular counseling lessons with suicide prevention for the Jasons Foundation, if anybody ever wants to take a look at that. Going through that with the kids and helping them identify step by step what to look for for kids at risk. And then what do you do if you notice somebody is hurting and how do you help them? Because I always advocate with the kids, what are you going to do from 3:00 PM to 8:00 AM the next morning? And so it's a pretty important role to help train them to support each other. So that's kind of what we do. We have at least five kids right now returning, which is awesome, and three should be watching, so.
Awesome. And Helen?
I don't believe Helen is on the meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. You know, this is very important to us and as a community. And we appreciate your work. And we're very grateful that you're there. So if someone hasn't thanked you in a long time, the Commission would really like to thank you for your work. We'll move on to, I'm sorry, Hispanic Heritage Day Proclamation. I have it right here in front of me. So Hispanic Heritage Month is a long celebration of contributions, diverse cultures, and extensive histories of the Hispanic community in Bernalillo County and the United States. Hispanic Heritage Month begins as a commemorative week in 1968, intended to recognize the heritage and contributions of Hispanic communities in the history of the United States. And the first national proclamation was issued on September 17th by President Johnson. And whereas the designation Hispanic was introduced to the US Census in 1970 to create a broad national category that included the Spanish-speaking communities of Mexico, Cuba, Puerto Rican immigrants. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month starts on September 15th of each year to coincide with the Independence Day celebration of Central America. Neighbors El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, who declared their independence from Spain on September 15th, 1821, and coincides with the independence of Mexico on September 16th, Chile on September 18th, Belize on September 21st. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month was expanded from a commemorative week to a month in 1989 for the first proclamation by President Bush to properly observe and coordinate events, activities to celebrate Hispanic culture and achievement. The Spanish-speaking peoples whose ancestors made their home and raised their family in the geographic areas identified as modern-day Mexico and the territory of New Mexico have a unique history. One of violent conflict and eventual peace with the indigenous peoples in the area. And whereas many of these families, a result of hundreds of years of settlement, share the same ancestry as their native brothers and sisters. The 2021 theme of the Hispanic Heritage Month observe themes as is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. Inviting us to celebrate Hispanic heritage to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. And whereas the county acknowledges and takes pride in the accomplishment of the Hispanic ancestors who fought for equal justice and peace. Now therefore be resolved that Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does honor the month of September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month and recognizes and encourages businesses, organizations, and public entities in Bernalillo County to recognize the history and culture of Hispanic communities in our country every month of the year. Done this 31st day of August 2021 in Bernalillo County, the State of New Mexico, signed by all county commissioners here in Bernalillo County. So I also have Orlando Marquez and Elisa Castillo to speak on the proclamation. So whoever would like to go first?
Thank you, Chairman Casada. Fellow county commissioners, on behalf of the New Mexico Hispanic Heritage Committee, I'm Chairman Orlando.
And now I think he hit a dead spot. That's the problem.
Oh, no. Okay. That's okay. Hopefully he'll jump on. This is Elisa Castillo on the vice chair. We have some, you know, wonderful to see everyone. We have a great Hispanic Heritage Month coming up, and we have some great events coming up. We have the press conference and the kickoff on September 8th at Old Town. And then we also have the state fair and, you know, at the Hispanavia on the 15th and the 16th as well. So we have some great things going on. Hopefully he comes on right now. I think he hit a dead spot.
Yeah, that happens to me when I'm driving a lot, so. Yeah. I think that old commercial, "Can you hear me now?" comes into play.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but you know what? I have to move on with the meeting, but thank him very much. I know he's very proud to be in his position. And we're very honored to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month here in Bernalillo County. So thank you for letting us know about the events. You know, if you send that to us Commissioners, we will post that on our social media so we could get a great turnout for your events. And we appreciate, we see that you're very busy, but we appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you. We'll move on to National Recovery Month, which is Commissioner Barbosa to present.
Thank you so much, Chair Vasir Casada and committee members. I want to recognize that Jeremy Light, and I believe maybe Ann Eden is here, is Edenfield is here as well from Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery. And they'll be hopefully sharing a couple of words with us after I read this proclamation. I also just want to take the one minute to say that both in, you know, Adan Kariaga was a, you know, a person who lived his life in recovery and trying to spread recovery. Died this year, and I just want to recognize him with this proclamation. And also a good friend of mine, Kevin Satrie. He worked for several years. I first met him when I was at YDI, and he was doing street outreach then. He's been doing, he was, he lived his life doing street outreach with Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless and Needle Exchange. And he passed from cancer this, earlier this month. So I just want to recognize him, people who have really lived their life in their own recovery and in helping others find recovery. So thank you. I'm proud to present this proclamation. Whereas the 2021 National Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone. Every person, every family, every community reminds us and people in recovery and those that support them, that recovery belongs to all of us. And whereas recovery is for everyone because it benefits everyone. In recovery, we build new connections to ourselves, to our families and our communities. And whereas addressing the complex alcohol and drug and mental health need, treatment needs of children, youth, and families today requires both prevention and treatment interventions, which are fundamental to the safe and healthy future of Bernalillo County. And whereas more than 20 million Americans are living with substance use disorder, more than 90,000 Americans die from drugs and alcohol annually, and more than 8 million Americans suffer from both mental health and substance use disorders. Whereas we recognize National Recovery Month, now in its 32nd year, as a call to rejuvenate struggling communities and families. At the same time, we work alongside communities who grapple with inequitable conditions, including the effects of systemic racism, homophobia, transphobia, generational poverty, adverse childhood experiences, and other forces. Whereas mental health and substance use disorder are not one size fits all conditions, nor do they affect everyone equally. Culturally competent, multilingual resources and gender expansive programs should acknowledge and include LGBTQ plus, Black, Indigenous, and people of color and historically marginalized community members. And whereas similar to patients battling with chronic diseases like diabetes, high blood pressure, and asthma, 40 to 60% of people suffering with substance use disorder enter treatment, relapse from their plan of treatment. The recovery journey is less a bumpy road with multiple obstacles that require patience, awareness, and responsible solution, responsive solutions. Whereas observant of National Recovery Month serves as a reminder that when we empower communities and family, we are engaging in healing, and that extends beyond any one individual. Recovery is for anyone, everyone, means we are proud of our diversity. We are committed to sharing our personal accomplishments and struggles, reaching across barriers to support one another, and actively dismantling systems that harm our neighbors in recovery. Whereas local volunteers and organizations working to support the recovery of individuals have organized the Sixth Annual Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery Event, an event which will be held virtually throughout the month of September. These efforts are part of a larger recovery community whose host throughout the state of New Mexico. These events provide an opportunity for residents in recovery to celebrate their accomplishments, educate the community about their struggles and successes, and provide resources to individuals and families seeking information on solution-based paths to recovery. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes September 2021 as National Recovery Month and invites all residents, private institutions, businesses, and schools to participate by increasing awareness and understanding of the challenges inherent in the recovery process and spread the message that prevention works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible for people and families. Done this 31st day of August 2021 in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico, signed by all the Commissioners. Thank you. Let me just find a give opportunity for Jeremy Light to say a few words and share about the Albuquerque Recovery Celebration.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Barbosa. And thank you for your continued support and everybody's continued support for individuals on that road to recovery in Bernalillo County. And I do have Ann Edenfield Street with me as well to speak. First, we, I have to reiterate your words, Commissioner Barbosa. This is a huge part of this is in honor of our friend, our founder, and our teacher, Don Kariaga, who we lost this year. That every Recovery Month, every September, and we hope to be in person for these recovery celebrations and to bring to light everybody that is in recovery and all of those resources for people seeking recovery. Unfortunately, and myself and our other committee members last week had to make that tough decision that we have to go virtual this year out of safety. I do also want to add that we are thankful and happy to have the honor to share the month of recovery, September, with suicide prevention as behavioral health disorders do ripple and one affects the other. We do have, as I said, many events going on throughout the month. And I don't know if you want to go over those or add anything that I may have missed, but thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioners. We appreciate your support. And I know you all realize how important it is that we try to work with recovery and try to reach out to the families and everybody that is dealing with this. It touches every family. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel things. We will have a month-long art show taking place Friday night, the 3rd. We will have that grand opening. Some of Adan's work will be showing. And then that's open all month. The powwow, unfortunately, in the live event on Civic Plaza had to be canceled. But look for all kinds of interviews with people in recovery, program directors that are leading the programs. And we will continue to do our work and do everything that we can. We would have had about 80 different providers on the plaza being there of support. So we are going to try to get them all involved virtually. And so there will be resource lists available. So if anyone needs that help, they can find it. And we just thank you for your support and realize that if we're going to cut crime, it starts with cutting out the addiction and the problems that we have that stem from that. So thank you for your support, and we're going to continue to do our work, and thank you for doing yours.
Thank you both so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner. We will now move, well, we will move on to certificates of awards. We have deferred that item. We'll go on to item six, board and committee appointments. 6A, the Arts Board Appointment for District 5. This appointment is to appoint Elizabeth Casey Padilla to the Arts Board representing Commission District 5, sponsor Chair Pascoti. Would you like to say a few words before we vote?
Yeah, sure. I am proud and happy to support Elizabeth for this position on the Arts Board. She is a longtime artist as well as an APS art teacher. And I think we all know the value of the arts, especially in our public schools. So I think she's just the perfect person for this. I had the honor of emceeing the art dedication at the Bernalillo County District Attorney's Office, the Luminaria exhibit on Saturday. And I mentioned it to Kent Swanson that her appointment was coming up, and he was so excited. I guess he's had really good conversations with her and thinks that she will be just a wonderful addition to the Arts Board. So I move to approve.
So we have a motion for approval. I'll second. Madam County Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barbosa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
That's an aye.
Aye. Mr. Casada.
Aye.
Chair Pascotti.
Aye.
So called.
All right. That is unanimous vote. Congratulations. Yeah, that's an important board to all of us, and so we like to welcome her. And so, you know, there's some great work that happens through the Arts Board, so very exciting. So item B, another appointment, Detention Facility Oversight Management Advisory Board. Number one on B1 would be to reappoint Bob Martinez, representing at large, sponsor Commissioner O'Malley. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I really appreciate Mr. Martinez's willingness to serve again another term. He texted me that he failed to update his bio, and he wanted to add that he's currently commissioned on the New Mexico Public Safety Advisory Committee and was appointed by Governor Michelle Huangrisham for a four-year term. And he was unanimously approved by the New Mexico Senate. So I want to thank him for his willingness to serve again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can I have, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote for this appointment?
Yes, Commissioner Barbosa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pascotti. Oh, Vice Chair Casada, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Chair Roman Pascotti. You guys are missing me.
Aye.
Okay.
Chair, if I can have, for the record, who seconded that motion?
I can second.
It was Commissioner Barbosa. But there's a second, and we'll take that. So, and then so the next appointment would be Jenny Lusk, representing at large, the Oversight Management Board. And the sponsor is Commissioner Barbosa.
Thank you, Vice Chair and fellow Commissioners. I just want to, if you were here on the special meeting that we had last week to appoint to HG19, Jenny Lusk was one of the candidates, and I was proud to get to interview her. She's brilliant, has been committed in a public service. And throughout her lifetime, she lives and raised children as a single mom here in my, just here in the southeast Albuquerque for the last like 23-plus years. And she's an attorney and has great passion around this. So I'm excited to have her appointment and excited that she accepted the appointment to serve on the Detention Facility Maintenance Oversight Board.
So I assume you move for approval?
Oh, sorry. I moved to approve her in, please. Can I get?
And I got a second by Commissioner O'Malley. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barbosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pascotti.
Aye.
So called.
All right, unanimous. Congratulations on both those appointments. You know, that's a very important part of what Bernalillo County does. And so we appreciate their service. Moving on to Youth Sports Commission Appointment, nominating Angie Jepson to represent all sports on the Youth Sports Commission, sponsor Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, yeah, I just want to make a motion for Ms. Jepson. But first, I just want to draw attention to her resume. It's impressive. I didn't realize somebody could have as diverse of a resume, all in sports. And the development of sports, both on a professional and local level in Bernalillo County as well as nationwide, our youth participation in sports is declining every year. And speaking with the Sports Commission, they're working hard to try to reverse those trends. And the more we can increase participation with youth in sports, less trouble they're going to get in, more involved they'll be in in school. It's a healthy outlet for stress or working out problems. So I think Ms. Jepson's going to be a great addition, and I want to thank her for her willingness to serve. For her willingness to serve. So with that, I'll I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, and yeah, sports are, uh, I could speak to that. Sports saved all me and all my friends. So uh, yeah, that's how important that really is. So we appreciate that. Uh, so Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barboa.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
That's a nine.
Yeah. Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations and thank you so much. Uh, we'll move on to item seven. Uh, A, um, there is, there's no one signed up for public comments, just so everybody knows. Um, and uh, I don't think we received anything for this meeting is uh. Uh, and so we'll move on to seven A, uh, PNM, new construction energy efficiency program. This is a presentation uh by Sherek Roanhorse and Manuel Quintana from PNM. So take it over, guys.
All right. Chair Piscotti, Vice Chair Casada, and honorable members of the Commission. Uh, thank you for allowing us to uh speak briefly uh before the Commission. PNM is so thankful to continue to be able to serve you and your communities as your energy provider with increasingly cleaner and more renewable energy. Helping business customers save money by becoming more energy-wise is an important part of what we do. Um, one thing I'm talking about today is just uh basically I'm here to thank you for the ongoing partnership, especially as it relates to. Energy efficiency. Uh, since two thousand and seven, PNM energy efficiency programs have given customers almost. One hundred and nine million back in rebates and saved almost five point two billion kilowatt hours of electricity. Enough to power about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand homes annually. The these programs have kept an estimated three point one million metric tons of carbon dioxide out of the air and saved one point seven billion gallons of water. We are joining you today uh to recognize the county's effort to become more energy-wise. Uh, recently, Burnley County participated in the new uh, the PNM new construction energy efficiency program. During the renovation and construction of your new Alvarado Square facility. We're, we are excited to share with you that PNM will be providing a check with to the county today for its efforts. Uh, before turning it over to my colleague, I also want to commend the county for its efforts to work toward the development of a climate action plan. Saving energy is a part of this effort, and I think you should be proud of the energy savings that you will realize at Alvarado Square. Alvarado Square, and I'm sure that this will contribute toward that effort. I'll turn it over to my colleague Manuel Quintana, uh, who's our senior strategic account manager who works daily on a day-to-day basis. With folks uh from the Public Works Department and other uh good folks at the county. Manuel.
Thank you, Sherek. Um, I'm hoping you can hear me. Can I get someone to say you can hear me? Yes, thank you. So I was having difficulty with my video, so uh with that, I'm just glad you can hear me, but I'm here this evening. Um. Again, Sherek uh mentioned that I'm Manuel Quintana, I'm the PNM Strategic Account Manager. I work with the employees of Burnley County. On a regular basis. Um, I'm here this evening to honor the Burnley County on the remodel of Alvarado Square. During this remodel, the county partnered with us in the uh energy efficiency rebate program. And the incentive for this participation in this two-year remodel is for two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, I met last week with Julie Morkes Baca and we presented them with the check. Uh, so we're grateful and happy to do that. So be uh being able to provide rebates while helping our business customers save money is something that we take a lot of pride in. We are grateful that Burnley County took advantage of this great bent of energy efficiency program. With the upgrades made during this renovation, you will continue to save money on your electric bills and energy in the future. The overall remodel included the renovation of the three hundred and two thousand square foot eight-story building. And the measures that you all took was uh three water cooled chillers. Uh, package variable air handlers, LED lighting throughout the building. Variable frequency fans and pumps and HVAC controls. Again, the renovation uh for this project is an incentive of two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. We encourage all our customers to participate in these programs to save energy and to save money. I will continue to work with the employees of Burnley County and looking at all the other properties owned by Burnley County. In hopes that we can identify additional uh properties that we can help get you some incentives for and save you money. On those incentives. Uh, so with that, welcome to the neighborhood. PNM is excited to have you across the street. Uh, there's a lot more traffic and a lot more visibility, and so we are grateful to have you in the neighborhood. Uh, thank you for having Sherek and I this evening, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to send Sherek or I. An email or give us a call. We'd be glad to continue to help you with with your energy. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners, this is just, I just also wanted to point out, this is the largest um check. Or rebate that we provided to any of our business customers. Uh, so there's a, I mean, this is significant for us and we thought it would. This would be a moment for all of us to um celebrate.
Of course, and thank you. Thank you both for uh your presentation and and working with Burnley County uh to move forward. Uh, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Roanhorse and Mr. Uh, Quintana. And I just want to also thank you for your partnership here. It's a, it is a point of celebration and it's exciting to see uh. Just the cutting-edge uh technologies that the county is putting forward and your partnership in that. So um, thank you for being good partners and uh um, hopefully we can get uh more uh savings in the future.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, we will now uh.
Good Chair.
Yes, uh, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, uh, Jill, I just have a question for our manager Julie Morkes Baca. At one point, we were looking at. Possibly doing solar on the building, and I know that that might be still an idea. Uh, could you speak to that, Madam, I mean, uh. Uh, manager Baca?
Absolutely, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner O'Malley. Yes, that's still, uh, we are still planning on installing solar here at Alvarado Square. That's a goal of ours. Um, but as you know, it's going to take some funding, but it all, it's all going to pay off like it's going, like it's going to with all the equipment. That we were able to install and thank you for your support on that. So happy to give you an update at a future meeting.
All right, great. Yeah, solar is something that we know is the future and that we always have to make sure that that's part of our plan. So we appreciate that. Uh, thank you for the question. Thank you for the answer. Um, we will now move on to uh. So uh approval of minutes, I move to approve the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Piscotti, thank you so much. Uh, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Barboa.
Hi.
Mr. Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley. I got you. Vice Chair Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
So call.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, we'll move on to nine A, feet and fleet and facilities management. Uh, the amendment to the memorandum of understanding for the operation of law enforcement center with city of Albuquerque. So um, it is to authorize county manager to approve the amendment. To the memorandum of understanding for the operation of a law enforcement center between Burnley County and the city of Albuquerque for the. For the capital request uh associated with the repairs to the. To the American and disabled ADA ramp at the facility, which is a hundred and ninety-eight. Thousand four hundred and sixty, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, and so uh. Uh, am I going to need votes on item A one and A two separately?
Mr. Chair, this is the consent agenda, so it just requires one vote for night, item nine A and nine B.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll, so we'll do a a vote on uh nine A and nine B. So I will read uh A. A two, it's authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute any subsequent amendments related to and resulting. From this request. And then item B is parks and recreation and open space. Uh apparel and promotional products, RFB, uh, a motion to one award RFB. Uh, zero 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 one dash twenty-two dash JM to screen images for the apparel and promotional products. And two, approve agreement between Burnley County and Screen Images Inc. And three, authorize county managers to execute and subsequently subsequent amendments to the agreement. So I move for approval on item nine A and nine B. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Piscotti. Um, all, uh, well, let's just go to Madam County Clerk. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barboa.
Hi.
Mr. Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
So call.
So now we'll move on to adoption of resolutions. Uh, Madam. Adam County Clerk, uh, could you please provide resolution numbers for item ten A, ten B, and ten C?
Yes, sir. Ten A is AR twenty twenty-one dash seventy-seven. Ten B is AR twenty twenty-one dash seventy-eight. Oh, hold on here. Ten C, number one, is AR twenty twenty-one dash seventy-nine. C two is AR twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash eighty, I'm sorry.
So Chair, I have a question. So.
Yes.
Maybe this is for Julie, but are if item ten, are they all different? Are we going to vote on each item?
Yes, Madam Commissioner O'Malley. These I don't.
So ten A, ten B, and ten C are all different. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay, so we'll move on to ten, ten E. Um, this is encouraging COVID nineteen vaccine vaccinations in Burnley County. Um, this is sponsored by me. And I think before I read it, uh, I just want to make a quick, uh, you know, public statement. Uh, because I know I'm going to get inundated with phone calls after this. Um, look, the the reason why I'm doing this is because. I think that, uh, you know, as an elected official, I hadn't really spoken up on one way or the other. Because I truly do believe that, you know, we have the freedom to choose for ourselves and the right to choose for ourselves on everything. So not just this, but on everything in your life. I truly believe that that that's up to you. I'm just pleading because uh, you know, I want to follow the science and I want. And and look, I have a friend right now who refused to get the vaccination and she's been thirty days. In ICU fighting for her life. Um, and I just don't want anybody to have to go through what. That we're going through as friends, uh, what I have through as family. Um, we've lost family, we've lost friends. And I wished there was another way to do this. Um, and look. I've been wearing a mask since twenty nineteen. I think for a lot of you who know me back before COVID, I worked seven days a week, so I traveled a lot. And so I didn't want to get sick because I wanted to be able to make all my commitments. So since twenty nineteen, I've been wearing a mask. And since twenty nineteen, I've never had a cold. I didn't get the, I've never gotten the flu since then, and I have not. Been diagnosed with COVID nineteen. I wish there was other avenues for us besides that. But I'm going to follow the science. And with that being said, I'm going to read this. Um, a resolution uh encouraging Burnley County residents to vaccinate against COVID nineteen virus. Whereas COVID nineteen virus was declared a pandemic in the United States in March of twenty twenty. Whereas the Federal Drug Administration approved three vaccines for emergency use in late twenty twenty. And those vaccines have been widely available to to New Mexicans in twenty twenty-one. And whereas according to the Center of Disease Control, uh, the CDC. The COVID nineteen vaccines are safe, effective, and help build protections against the COVID nineteen virus. And whereas those who are unvaccinated can get and spread COVID nineteen. And whereas the CDC recommends anyone able to get a COVID nineteen vaccine to do so as soon as possible. Whereas according to the CDC in late June, the seven-day moving average of reported cases was around twelve thousand. By late July, the seven-day moving average reported of cases over sixty thousand. And whereas the case numbers are close to numbers seen before the vaccine was widely available. And whereas the predominant strain of COVID nineteen virus is the Delta variant. Whereas the Delta variant is more contagious. And some data suggests that the Delta variant is more likely to cause severe illness in unvaccinated persons. Whereas it appears that even fully vaccinated people can spread the virus, but are likely to be in in effect in in. Infected for a shorter period of time than unvaccinated people. And whereas the available authority of COVID nineteen vaccine vaccines are highly effective and preventing. Are highly effective in preventing severe disease and death, including against the Delta variant. And whereas low vaccination coverage in communities is driving the surge in the case associated with Delta variant. Which also increases the chance of even more variants could emerge. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, the governing body of of the county of Burnley. Um, all Burnley County community members are encouraged to get a vaccine to protect themselves and those in the community. Who are medically unable to be vaccinated such as because of age or medical reasons. So I am moving uh for approval of this resolution. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Have a second from.
Because I I believe in science and um, I know the the science bears out that the vaccination. Reduces the severity of illness. If somebody should come in contact with COVID. Their illness is much more mild and they stay out of the hospital. And so I think it's. Just the right thing to do to support our healthcare workers. And reduce the burden on our hospitals and our healthcare workers. So I'm happy to second that.
Okay, Commissioner Benson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I do like uh. Your introduction of that actually, because I I'm in favor of supporting the vaccine. Um, but I also like your um clarification that. You said something about supporting people's free choice and uh, but I also know that um, you've had. I remember you told me about a dozen people in your family that had passed away from it. Uh, and that was about six months ago or so. So I know um, it's hit you very close. Uh, it's hit me close, but not in the same way. Um, I had several friends and uh family members who thought they were going to die. They were very scared when they caught it. Um, but I've been fortunate and um COVID is kind of like a. A game of Russian roulette. You just don't know who's gonna um die and who's not. And uh. You know, uh, Commissioner Piscotti, um. I believe in science too, and uh that that's become a tagline. It's almost become a political tagline, and I don't like it politically. And I'm married to a scientist. Her job title actually has uh science in it. And um, I love science, but you know, science is very complicated. And so um. Uh, yeah, I just want to, you know, I don't want to divide people on this. I like to unite people on this and uh. Because of that, I'm willing to support it, uh, just like you're saying here in this uh proclamation.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate that. And it's, you know, and like I said, we're just encouraging. The whole thing reads, we're just encouraging. We're not mandating anything, but we're just trying to. We're not mandating anything, but we're just trying to follow what we know and the data that we have. And that's, as community leaders, that's all we have to go by. So I appreciate the support. Um, any more discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna prolong any, I did wanna, if I may, Chair, um, um, I, you know, I have been, from the time we learned about COVID early on, super careful, I got vaccinated and I still got it. And I know that I, I'm not the epitome of health. I'm, um, I'm, I'm probably on the more high risk. And so I am thankful that both that I had the vaccine, because I think that kept me, I do believe it kept me out of the hospital. I'm, I'm not the most healthy person, so I think I would have been in much greater, um, you know, recovery. And it's scary nonetheless, and I don't wish it on anybody. And I just think, um, you know, the fact that I had the vaccine and had access to it. You know, people in other countries are fighting for access to what we wanna give everybody for free. And, um, my son's one who did, who refuses to get it, um, even as much as I talked him about it. Um, so I, I just appreciate proclamations and resolutions like this that can keep getting the message out in different ways and to different people. So thank you for bringing this forward and definitely support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And there's, I think, one thing that we have to let everybody understand that the vaccine isn't free. Um, we paid for it. I mean, those companies got paid by the, by the government of the United States of America, which is our money, which is our taxpayer money is how they exist. And so, um, if you really follow the money, we did pay for it. Um, you know, a- as we all know, there ain't nothing free in, in a freedom. Freedom costs money. Uh, and so, uh, you know, that's always been something that kinda bothered me, like, oh, I'm not gonna take something that's free. I'm like, no, you, you paid for it. Uh, so, uh, anybody else? No, we're good? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, Madam County Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barbosa.
Hi.
Mr. Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
Thank you, so called.
That says unanimously. Thank you all so much for your support. Um, we will now move, okay, um, I have item ten B. Um, Commissioner O'Malley.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I was reading the, uh, the current, uh, reiteration of this, and it's really very different from what we started out with. I think that there was a sort of a compromise, um, legis- uh, resolution that was set forth. So if you would, um, I know you're the sponsor, and if you would consider, uh, I would like to, uh, ask for a deferral to the next meeting.
Um, um, Commissioner O'Malley, uh, I wa- I wanna do this right. Um, I wanna make sure that we do this right and that we're not, um, rushing in anything. I think once this does pass, this will be something that will be in place for a long time. And so because of that, I want all the commissioners to feel that I am doing the right thing and that we are putting the right thing in. I know that me, um, and, um, Legal and Treasurer, Ms. Ms. Madam Treasurer, have been working on this. Um, we, we also wanna be, make sure that we're doing the right thing. She asked for the deferral the first time around, um, and to respect that, uh, to respect her and respect you. Um, I will, I will second your deferral, uh, and we will make sure that we do it right. Um, because I just wanna make sure that we do it right. And, uh, just so Madam, Madam Treasurer, so you know, um, um, it's, you know, we, I just wanna make sure that it, it may be that we could get it closer to the original. Um, and I think that, um, you know, with some of the new information that Madam Treasurer had really, uh, looked and hunted down for me, I think we can. And based on that, I will, I will second the deferral, uh, for item, uh, ten B. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any discussion on this? No? Okay. Uh, Madam County Clerk can have a roll call vote. Uh, yes, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, Madam Treasurer.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, and I, I fully support, uh, the deferral. We did get some last minute, uh, information in, uh, at the sa- the same day, actually, that, uh, we were working with Legal on, uh, drafting this new resolution. So I appreciate always having more time to, uh, as you say, really get it right. Um, and get it to be the best for our employees, uh, that, that we can. Um, we know there's no, what, financial incentive for us, um, because there's no money transaction. They're not consultants or anything like that. So, um, we have to do our due diligence. And I really appreciate the Commissioner for, uh, for bringing up another deferral. So thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Uh, Madam County Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barbosa.
Um, I think Commissioner Benson has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Benson.
I didn't see it either. Sorry.
It's okay, no problem. Yeah, I just wanna, um, I'm still, even though it's deferred, I'm glad this is on the docket. And, uh, I'm glad we're gonna be discussing it. Um, financial education is, uh, it's so important and so under-delivered at every level in our society. So, uh, any way that we as a commission can increase financial education for, uh, our employees or the county, uh, residents or the community at large, I'll be for it. So, uh, I'm glad it's on there. I'm okay with it being deferred. Um, like you said, you wanna do it right, and so I'm glad we're doing it right. But, uh, I'm just glad it's still being moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Madam County Clerk, roll call vote, please.
All ready. Commissioner Barbosa.
Hi.
Mr. Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
All right. So that is, so that is deferred. We will go to item ten C, Capital Improvement Program. Uh, Burnaleo County Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plans twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-two, CIP Geo Bond Schedule, uh, Ms. and Seniors to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Maria Martinez and Seniors, and I'm the Capital Improvement Program Strategic Manager. There are two motions before you this evening for your consideration and approval. The first one is requesting to approve the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven ICIP, which is a state, which is a state of New Mexico annual requirement when requesting capital outlay legislative funding. We currently have a hundred and two projects that total seven hundred and forty-five million, and of which only one fif- one hundred and fifty-three million is funded. These priority projects are updated periodically through the year by departments within our CIP database, which is used to update the state's ICIP database and develop our legislative requests. The county's two thousand twenty-two legislative request will be made later this year in the fall, and CIP will come back to the commission through a minute, through an admin- administrative resolution. The second motion is required by the CIP ordinance and spells out our twenty twenty-two Geo Bond schedule for next year's cycle. I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Madam County Clerk, is that your hand up or?
Yes, it is. Because of the deferral, Chairman, we're gonna change C one to AR twenty twenty-one dash seventy-eight.
Okay.
And number two will be AR twenty twenty-one dash seventy-nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Um, uh, do we have any discussion on these items? None? Okay, so I'll move for approval. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner O'Malley, um, and this is item C one and two. All right. Um, Madam County Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barbosa.
Hi.
Mr. Vincent.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada.
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Hi.
So called.
All right, so we'll move on to item twelve B, Communication Services, CARES Funding, uh, Presentation. Um, County Manager to introduce. Madam County Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So we wanted to, you know, we, we've already expended our CARES funding, but I just, we wanted to give you an update on CARES, and we wanted to kinda let you know the various ways that the CARES funding was spent. So as, as many of you may know, the, the county fully expended the thirty-one point eight million dollars of the CARES funding. And I wanted, and I want to, uh, just really give a shout out to our finance department. Um, they, um, the, the majority of the funding was, I mean, it was all spent. It went, first of all, it went directly into the communities, so that's for all the county and for you all, uh, for the commission to know, and thank you for your support on that. And then I also want to note that they did an excellent job with the processing, reporting, uh, and the reporting of all our expenditures, uh, to the federal government. And so I would get, um, I would, I would get notified by Shirley and her finance department, I mean, on a weekly basis of where things were, how things were being spent. I mean, it was monitored very, very closely. Um, we expended the funds in many areas with the majority in the, in the following areas. So the economic stimulus, the small business grants, the behavioral, um, health service grants, the housing supporting, uh, support grants, the public safety and public, um, health payroll expenses, public health expenses, um, the, as you all know, we work, we teleworked and we, we, we continue to do so. Um, so the teleworking and technology, uh, security expenses. So we're going to, again, we're gonna, we'd like to present you with a video that highlights the many initiatives funded by the CARES, uh, funding. Um, there's various initiatives, there's gonna be testimonies, testimonies by staff, testimonies, uh, by, of course, you all, the commission. And so now that the CARES has ended, we're off to ARPA. But before, you know, we go too far into ARPA, um, we wanted to, uh, present this video to you. So sit back and enjoy. And, uh, I just wanna thank Paul Evans and Tia Bland and Tom Thorpe, Tiffany, uh, Chombley for the video production. They did an awesome job. So, um, so just enjoy the video. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
We all wanna get back to normal here in Burnaleo County.
Like eating out restaurants.
Going back to school.
Going on vacation.
Think back to one year ago. We were about a month into this pandemic, a lot of anxiety, worry, but also hope. So twelve months later, we are leading the nation in vaccines. Our success, I recently found out, was thanks to some unexpected heroes. Even as adults, we can learn a lot from Mr. Rogers.
When I was a little boy and something bad happened in the news, my mother would tell me to look for the helpers.
Anyone in this area, anyone in this area?
Gonna be right over there.
Okay, I go over there.
Yes, sir.
No problem, sir.
But no cardigans here. To find our unexpected helpers, just look for the colorful vests.
We went from childcare giving to, to medical field.
Since December, dozens of Burnaleo County Parks and Rec workers have found themselves with new and very unfamiliar jobs, helping thousands of their fellow New Mexicans get their COVID nineteen vaccine.
You posted a picture of getting a vaccination with some of your classmates.
Yeah.
On Better Call Saul, and, uh, wh- why did you get it all together?
Well, Stephen Michael Casada, who's on the left side of the frame, who plays Gomi in Breaking Bad and in Better Call Saul, is kind of a community leader down there in New Mexico and Albuquerque. And he has passed on the vaccine three times so that frontline workers can get it, even though his number came up. And we were talking to Stephen, and we said, let's get it together. And Stephen arranged for us to get it. So we all got the vaccine and feel great. And we hope everyone in New Mexico and Albuquerque will also join us. It's a great system down there. Just sign up and get the vaccine and let's protect each other.
Wear a mask, wash your hands, and get the shot. We've heard it all and done it all to protect our town.
The coronavirus COVID nineteen pandemic has been a piece of history that we are all part of and that we will never forget. Over the past fourteen months, many difficult decisions were made, with all of them in some way affecting the lives of Burnaleo County residents. However, residents and county employees were always at the forefront of any decisions affecting the changes to our everyday life. Closing county buildings and sending employees home was tough and quite frankly, scary. This took a lot of planning and coordination. A lot of thought in into how working from home would affect not only county employees, but also residents needing their services. Laying off employees was never on the table, and the county commission made sure we could afford to keep everyone on the payroll. And at the same time, the county wasn't fully set up for teleworking. But like many large businesses, our information technology department stepped up and got us there quickly.
Well, equipping our entire staff for remote work was a monumental task. Took some creativity, including not only our normal purchasing processes, but sourcing some equipment locally.
Many of the programs, relief efforts, county initiatives, and other items during the pandemic were paid through with the Coronavirus Aid, Lead, and Economic Security, or the CARES Act. The money was granted by the federal government to assist states, counties, and municipalities to continue to operate and provide services. Burnaleo County took that a step further by creating opportunities for local businesses and for residents to share in the CARES funding.
We've had the back of businesses, both large and small. Help the county and the CARES money, a lot of businesses just wouldn't survive.
Deputy County Manager Shirley Reagan heads up the Burnaleo County Finance Division.
When the pandemic hit, the county shifted their focus. We minimized any new initiatives, and what we did is we focused on the CARES funding and how we could get that out to the community, as well as how we could use that to get our employees working from home and continue to conduct the county business, given the restrictions that were with the emergency order.
The federal government gave the county nearly thirty-two million dollars in financial assistance in the recovery of the pandemic. The rest of the CARES money was plowed directly back into the community through economic stimulus grants. More than nine million dollars was earmarked for small business grants to keep businesses open while their doors were closed. The finance team was instrumental in directing and implementing a well-coordinated plan.
You could say that stimulus money was one of the tools that afforded us the opportunity to keep many owners in business. This helped pay their rent, keep the lights on, expanded outdoor seating capacity, and kept many workers on the payroll. You could also say that this is an investment in our future and through for Burnaleo County's commitment to a strong business climate in the past, present, and moving forward.
Housing support grants kept renters in their homes, and behavioral health grants supported those in need. What was really important during the last year and a half was the housing department was able to provide tenants and landlords with utility and rental assistance. This allowed families to stay in their homes during the pandemic and not worry about being evicted. Behavioral health needs in the community never stopped, and the pandemic made access to these services more critical than ever. The Department of Behavioral Health Services awarded grants to providers navigating this new telehealth setting brought on by the pandemic. CARES funding paid for public safety and public health workers to stay on the job, whether it was at our behavioral health campus or assisting those dealing with homelessness. The work continued, the care continued, and our community marched forward. Public health expenses accounted for more than five million dollars of the CARES funding. Personal protective equipment for workers included gloves, sanitizer, and cleaning supplies, and kept county employees going above and beyond the call.
Well, when residents called on public safety, our firefighters, our sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, dispatchers, behavioral health specialists, even animal care officers, they didn't skip a beat. And the state was dependent on our crews as well. County firefighters traveled across the state directing long-term care facilities on how to handle the pandemic. Our knowledge and our expertise during these conditions made the county an invaluable asset to the state.
Aside from the pandemic, something unique was happening. The county's Emergency Operations Center, designed to handle catastrophic events, directed the county's COVID response for more than a year. This was a first for Burnaleo County. This was a first for Burnleal County. Richard Clark is Burnleal County's Emergency Management Director.
When the Emergency Operations Center is open, it's a twenty four seven operation. We're designed to handle natural disasters like force fires and tornadoes, but we never expected to deal with the magnitude of a global pandemic.
As residents and workers weathered the COVID storm, the time came to steer Burnleal County back toward normal. That meant as the newly developed vaccines came rolling in, Burnleal County again answered the call, establishing vaccination pods. The Burnleal County Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Department employees provided a huge amount of support that helped the vaccination clinics operate efficiently.
We needed every able-bodied person within the county to help with administering vaccinations, adding entry, parking control, and security. Nearly two thousand five hundred people came through our doors every day to get vaccinated. In the end, we were able to vaccinate more than fifty thousand residents at county centers.
Getting people signed up and getting shots into arms is why Burnleal County and the state of New Mexico have one of the highest vaccination rates in the country. The county continues to lead the charge and is being recognized for its planning, implementation, and follow-through on its programs and initiatives. A special award was given to the county manager's office in recognition of these efforts and for sharing CARES experience with the thirty two other counties in New Mexico. But the true recognition comes from the community. Iowa Parks and Rec workers have been priceless for Lori Garrettson with the State Health Department. Her tappers, as she affectionately calls them, filled thousands of syringes with COVID vaccines every day at these events. But she admits, without Leroy, Maya, Dez, and the dozens of other parks and rec workers, we would not be in the encouraging spot we are today. We basically bring the vaccine in and I take vaccine out, and they are running the rest of the show. I pointed out to them, they're part of history, getting us back to normal. Thank you. They chuckled because they don't see it that way. They're just doing what they know best.
They're double checking, making sure you're okay.
Being helpers.
As New Mexicans, everybody's trying to work together. And I think before that, we might have took that a little for granted. Now everybody's having a really work together.
And I think even Mr. Rogers would agree.
It's a beautiful day on the snowboard.
There's no doubt that every employee with the county stepped up and answered the call during the pandemic. We should all be proud of the county's efforts and resolve to pitch in wherever needed during these unprecedented times. I personally want to thank each and every employee for stepping up to the challenge and helping us to succeed. And the Burnleal County Commission for their foresight and support for workers and residents alike. I also want to thank the community for having faith in the county's abilities to just get the job done. I know now that we can take on any challenge put before us and truly succeed. We are Burnleal County.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. Um, yeah, what a, yeah, I I don't think anybody really knew all the behind, uh, you know, the scene, the workers. Uh, I saw them there. Um, I didn't know where they came from, but I'll tell you what, I truly do appreciate them uh very much. And so what a great kind of way to honor them and and honor the work of everybody uh from, you know, from the the county manager on down. Um, you're all amazing, as we know. Um, d- does anybody else have any, any comments they'd like to? Anybody? Okay, well, thank you so much. That was awesome. I think we all enjoyed that very much. Um, I will now go on to the announcement of the next commission meeting. Um, that is Tuesday, September fourteenth. It will be twenty twenty one will be a zoning meeting at three P M on Zoom. Uh, and then uh Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty one administrative meeting at five P M on Zoom. Um, thank you all so much, and uh there's no any other business. Uh, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye bye.